Okay.
Everybody ready?
We got you, Captain.
All right.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Aransas County Navigation District Public Meeting, nine AM, Monday, November third. We recognize a quorum and we will bring the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiances to the flags we all know and love that aren't here.
Oh.
On the wall.
Ah, good job. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to Texas. The state, under God, one and indivisible.
Love that.
Amen. God bless. And I think. Let's get this food stamps going.
Do we have any citizens be heard or spoken? Anybody that wants to?
Really? Oh, we do.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so at this time, we have no citizens to be heard, so we've got an open meeting. Subject number one is to approve the ACND minutes. And, uh, nobody's taken responsibility for that, according to the paper. Ms. Blasick, are you ready? You're ready?
There was one change that was made over the weekend. I just needed to change a copy paste error, and that was from Mr. Pico, that's Mr. Wright. That was the new change that was happened over the weekend.
With that changed, I approve the minutes as presented.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amen.
And thank you, Janine and Josh, for getting this jump started again.
I agree.
Okay. Central Possible Action, approval of Rockport Harbor Food Truck Park to be located along Navigation Circle utilizing parking area along the ACND Statue Garden, along with the Rockport Center for the Arts that owns those statues, sculptures. This approval includes utility setup with dedicated space for sitting area. Mr. Wynn?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, if you'll open this packet here. Got the blue label on the front. Flip it over. It's behind the first page. It's all double sided. So we've come up with a plan to create a Rockport Harbor Food Truck Park right there where the current Sculpture Garden is. It'll be on the north side. It doesn't interfere with the Sculpture Gardens itself. We'd have four hookups there at the north end of that Sculpture Garden. Is basically right now what I'm looking for is an approval to get this going. It would cost us about nine thousand dollars. There's two options, really. So nine thousand dollars is electrical, and I've got a thousand dollars in there for the water. And the separately. The second option, that's the first option there. We get four pedestals, fifty, thirty, and a hundred and ten volt pedestals with eight potential trucks, four that are committed. I brought them here today. So if y'all have any questions as far as the food truck side of things, we're able to ask that. The rent would be four hundred dollars a month. That's two hundred and fifty dollars the base fee, which is our going vendor rate, plus a hundred and fifty dollars electrical. That's based on max usage. I've talked to two other food truck parks. That's what they've said is the max usage for a food truck, according to them, mainly because the trucks use propane for cooking. That's onboard for them. So the option one, I could collect rent upfront for the expenses, and we could take care of it more in-house. But that being that they pay less over that first year, so we wouldn't recoup the money. The break even would be in about two months. The second option is fifteen thousand upfront for us. Same thing, everything the same, except we would charge the full price, which is the four hundred a month, the break even in about fifteen months. The food trucks that have committed are Mobile Eats, Spice Magic, Gabriella's, and Italian Pizza. We also have, uh, like a bicycle rental slash concessions that could fit really nicely there. With the addition of, or in anticipation of the aquarium starting to go up, we've got the Rockport Harbor itself there. We've got the courthouse, which is one of the boys there, and the beach. The food trucks have really liked this idea. And for us, it's a pretty good gig.
Cool.
Questions?
I think it's a great idea. Ms. Blasick, would you like to? Question or comment?
Gosh, can I discuss this a little bit? I would say if we do put up umbrellas, going to have to.
Can you speak up a little?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said a couple, I have a couple of issues and just concerns, I guess, when I do this. One, the main one is going to be the trash control, because that will, those, I mean, we just all know that the spending, you have that kind of activity that generates a lot of trash. But how do you, how do you plan to manage that?
At the moment, it would be Republic trash cans or harbor trash cans, whichever ones that we want to go with. The harbor, similar to harbor trash cans, where our guys go and add it to their route, if you want to call it that. So we, our guys can go pick up the trash bags or the trash cans and then.
Since it's within the city limits, how can we use harbor? I thought we had to use the Republic.
That's why this is all, this is all influx, if you want to call it that.
Okay.
So we have some options on the table. Now, if we have to use the city, and this is, if this gets approved, if y'all want to approve this, it has to be conditional on the city giving us the permit to, for the new development. So as of right now, that's where we're at. I have a meeting on Wednesday to move forward that, and I think that's gonna affect how it's gonna look based on whatever they're, you know, wanting. But the trash is absolutely a primary concern, because the water is there on literally three sides of that, depending on where the wind blows. But it's something that is on the radar.
Well, and then the wind brings up the other issue, which is, you mentioned umbrellas. Umbrellas don't typically stand up too well in wind.
Yes, ma'am. So the food trucks I've been working with so far are pretty used to kind of being resourceful. If the winds pick up, they know to take them down. You know, we have to be kind of dynamic with that. If they're wanting shade, the shade is gonna be kind of key to enjoying your prime of it. But the wind picks up, umbrella's gonna come down, et cetera.
And the other question is, I am anxious to hear what Mr. Wright has to say, because it is in his precinct.
Okay. Do you vendors have anything to say on those two subjects?
I will say, if I can, as far as the trash, and I just got back from D O W's festival in San Antonio. Each one of the food trucks, however many tables are picnic.
Can you stand?
Yeah, in front of there, they were allotted, like they were in charge of making sure those tables were clean. Everything was picked up, everything was put away, because if, if, like if you had two picnic tables in front of you, you were in charge of those. You were in charge of those umbrellas. You were in charge of the upkeep of the trash on the, or getting rid of them. So that would be one option of keeping fair, keeping it to where everyone, because we are right by the water. We don't want stuff flowing.
Exactly.
So, and it also did with the umbrellas. We did not use the umbrellas because of the weather, but you were in charge of that.
Okay.
One of the things I think on the wind situation is it is an absolute issue, one hundred percent around here, obviously. But I've always thought, when I first heard the idea, that you got kind of a natural windbreak there with your trees, and you've got some hills. So it'll be diminished a little bit from the southeast as a general rule, so.
Maybe.
Okay, Mr. De Leon?
I think it's a good idea. Now, we got the Centennial coming up, too. Would probably help out on drawing people in into the harbor area with contingency with the city permit and stuff. Why, so I think it's a good idea. Option one seems a little bit better than option two for us at this point in time. Get it going.
Reason B?
Pardon me?
Reason B? Why, why do you say that?
Because it's, it's probably quicker and easier for the vendors to get in, in, in input or get set up and for us to see whether or not the thing's gonna work or not.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
Okay. I have a couple questions. It looks like you're using existing parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good idea, which eliminates a lot of issues on there. Are these individually metered or just estimating?
We're estimating. I've been talking with them pretty regularly, but the, beside them as the food trucks that have committed. One hundred and fifty is the most that two food parks, one in Houston and one in Victoria, estimated their meters. I said, what's their maximum? They said about a hundred and fifty dollars. Now, that was on, based on kilowatt hours. They gave me the kilowatt hours. I converted it to dollars an hour, what that would look like, just for easier consumption. But the food trucks know that we can do metering, and we can make sure that that one fifty, if you want to call it a credit, it goes up to that, right? So if it exceeds that, then we can re-talk about it at a later date.
Sure. And are you talking about individually metering that whole line of circuits?
There is.
Not, not individually, but.
One meter for all of it. That's correct. And then I have, we can have smaller meters that can meter, say, we can measure it for, on their peak period, holiday or something like that, and then we can read, readjust it.
Maybe we'll figure out what's going on on that. I did forget to say, I think it's a fabulous idea, just an excellent plan, and it's a great use for this piece of land, the way it sits today, and creates some revenue coming through for the district. I don't know if y'all were aware, it's kind of up for rent right now, and to me, this totally changes that being up to rent immedi-, up for rent immediately. But I think that's good. I think option two is better. Number one, we have the money. Number two, we're not obligated to anybody if they pull out, they want their money back. And with a fifteen month payback, that's a great business deal in general. So I think that you can get it done quicker than everybody together, especially with the vendor's input as to how that works. And I seem to notice Josh being very responsive to our customers' needs, and if y'all have any comments on that? Okay, I think I'm good. Mr. Wright? Josh, I'm not really clear on the difference between one and two, but I assume it just has better capacity on the sixteen thousand?
Uh, so the fifteen thousand.
Well, you said fifteen, and I'm seeing sixteen, one twenty-nine, so clear that up first.
What?
What?
Document that's in front of me says sixteen thousand, one twenty-nine.
That's the.
No, that's the electric. No, you go in different direction.
Sorry, sorry. Let's see. No, that one over there. Same contractor?
Yes, sir. Same contractor, different job.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So this is, uh, for, this is for the Statue Gardens, Sculpture Garden? Okay, this is for a Bay Learning Center here, this building, the same contractor. Okay, so this one here is option one, two for one. And then option two, full price.
Confused.
Okay, and then.
All right, next question is, now that I'm following what we're doing here, did you get input from the food truck drivers themselves, food truck owners themselves, as to what the capacity that they need is?
Capacity average. Average, we give them all fifty amp, thirty amp service, so if they need more than fifty amps.
My question is, did they have input? Is that sufficient?
I didn't ask, I mean, I asked these guys individually, but I asked the food truck park, like the actual big food truck vendors.
Yes, sir.
That's where I got a majority of my infrastructure ideas from.
Well, I'm seeing nods, so I'm.
Yes, sir. Majority of my data, I took it into account, but the majority of my data came from the bigger parks that I'm.
Different area?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Are these going to be contracted? They'll sign a contract with us?
Yes, sir. Then you have these.
Then that brings in, in view of a lease? What did you say?
So I would, my current plan is to have them, like the rest of our vendors, sign.
A lease. Okay, that being said, remember I mentioned to you, do we have a potential conflict of interest with any non-compete clause with the food truck that we do have?
Negative.
Okay, so we don't have an issue there?
Negative.
That would be the only, only questions that I have. I think it's a great idea. Do you need water? So you will need to have access to water?
Yes, sir. Access to water. We'll have one more tanks. Water can be built in the morning. Tank, or I'm sorry, the hose that police did and put back in position. And then for gray water, it can also be pumped via a deployable hose to.
Did we? Both, both those, both these options include full, full services for these guys.
Okay, that part I didn't understand.
Sorry.
That's.
On the diagram there, the red square is electrical. Where that blue kind of arrow is, is where the water hose did, approximately, right? But it's in that area. There are two purples stars on there, both of those. The one on the top of the, by the restrooms, that exists currently, the one down by the, between the red and yellow squares, that purple star, that's where approximately location of the pump out. I say pump out, that's not right. The, their hookups for the gray water, that's where they can put their gray water.
Okay.
After it goes through grease traps and et cetera.
And that, those are hookups with the same sewer system, is that what you're saying?
That would go to our lift station there at the restrooms, and then from there, it goes on its way. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the gray water goes into the.
I'm good.
Sewer system, that's my question, rather than into the bay.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Matt?
Thank you. I have a, I think it's a very good idea. I have a concern in that we have just last week approved the schematic design for the rebuild of the aquarium. And we're going out on our cue real soon for the construction administration of that. That's gonna be kind of tight there anyhow. I'm not sure where you're planning on this. We had informally talked with the Nav District about a small laydown area for the materials. It'll be a metal building. And my concern is, with these trucks going in and people coming, where are we putting the materials for the new aquarium?
On the food truck spot, I'll tell you that. Would you like to address that as the director?
I haven't put much thought into that. I didn't.
Anybody have a big area back, further back?
There's a big parking lot between the Statue Garden and the Texas Parks and Wildlife Area, the huge asphalted area there. As far as our footprint, it should be out of the way from that parking area.
Way out.
I don't know where you're putting your food truck.
Can I show?
Yeah, sure. Ms. Russo's the county commissioner, is why she's got that input. Would you like to go in?
I think you need to go through the map with the county with regard to the design and place needed.
And do you see any issues?
I don't think so, no. Not with, not with all, all food trucks on that side of, that side of the statue garden. I, I don't see the laydown area as a huge issue.
I could tell you that right off the bat.
It'll probably feed a lot of, some of the crew that are working on it, but I don't see it actually affect my agenda.
Get him from.
Kind of open. Judy, did you have anything else?
I have a couple of things.
You're up.
Again, thank you. One is, I, this will be a little bit different situation than what we have done before. I'd like for Jerry to review our contract.
Absolutely.
It's adequate for this, and give us some, if there is a, any problems that develop, we need to make sure that we can stop that contract, cancel the contract.
Yeah, all, all of those kinds of concessions from this, until the whole.
Okay.
You bet. Are we talking in this contract? Are we talking a term, a year, less than a year, month to month?
So the initial contract, we're looking at doing one for the first year, and then reassess after that.
And everybody's good for your contract? Mr. De Leon?
I'm good.
I'm good.
My question was gonna be Jerry, but she, she asked the question, so.
The other.
Good again. Okay. Well, everybody's put it up.
Tell me one more, one more.
Go ahead.
We had this discussion just now about the laydown area. When do you plan to start the con, construction path for Francis County?
I would be the first in January. That would be the soonest.
That's when the construction will start?
It would be the soonest.
I understand. We all understand that. So what do you think would be, what's your length of time estimated? Do you know?
The projected finished date is May of twenty twenty-seven, but they're hoping they can bring it along past the.
Of twenty twenty-seven, true.
Okay, little, little off track here. Do any of you vendors have anything?
Well, that's, that's an important issue, because they will need a laydown area.
What Josh just showed me, it looks like.
And Janine said there's no issue.
Okay, just have one thing. Depending upon finish time for the electrical contractor, the rest of the stuff, you're gonna need a budget amendment to put some of it in this year and some of it next year, it would sound like. So that's just a formality, go along with the contract that Jerry reviews. Aye, sir.
Okay. Okay. Well, with that, we have, I guess, we need a motion. Does anybody have any? We have two options as far as the way it's laid out. Mr. De Leon thought one, I thought two. I guess we need to talk about that.
Well, a motion can take care of that.
Right, and does somebody want to put that in a motion?
Conditional to.
Just a shorter payback, and we control everything is the way I thought about it. So anyway, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rockport Harbor Food Truck Park area that was presented to us, was conditioned from the city permits.
Which option?
Whichever option Josh feels that it's appropriate for us to get.
Option two.
Okay.
Okay.
Option two.
A motion. Okay.
Can I get everybody's?
Say it again?
Can I get everybody recorded? Everybody good?
Well, we need a second first.
Yeah, we need a second.
I'll second the motion, Mark. Okay, Mr. De Leon made the motion. Mr. Wright made the second to approve a food truck area on the Navigation Circle Statue Garden. And with option two, the district makes the payments and full payment with the break even in fifteen months. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Way to go. How exciting. Good luck, y'all. Just fun.
Good job, Josh.
Good job. Okay, Central Possible Action approving a request from the Aransas County Master Swimmers to host an open water swimming competition on Sunday, May third, twenty twenty-six, near the breakwater adjacent to the nine one one ACND office. I don't know if I like the way that sounds. The ACND office. Mr. Wynn?
If y'all have the other packet, flip the page. We've got J C AMS swimming competition. Has some picture of the group. So I've got some representatives here. They can explain the process.
Either one of y'all. Nice logo on the shirt, baby.
I'm letting us dress y'all this morning.
Tell us who you are, for the record, please.
My name is Chad Lee. I'm one of the coaches for the Aransas County Master Swimming Team here, so we coach eighteen over. We do not have any younger swimmers, so we're looking at early May to have an open water swimming competition. Working with the city and look forward to working with you all to host an event here. Would like to have the entry for the event on the steps to the south of the breakwater, adjacent to your office. If that is safe, we need to get in the water and make sure there's no debris left over from the hurricane. Reason we like to use the stairs to enter the water and exit the water, so we keep track of the athletes. If we are on the north side of breakwater, there's a little more risk of not being able to keep track of everyone that goes in and gets out. We will have lifeguards in the water in boats. There would be a buoy off the end of the breakwater that would basically be the start of the action moving to the north along the beach park. There would be another buoy that you can see on your diagram that would be at the half mile mark, and then another buoy close to the pier for the beach park that would be at the one mile mark. So we feel that we have a safe competition set up. It's an event that would bring people to town to put heads and beds, help our hot phones, and we would like your consideration of this event.
Cool.
So if y'all have any safety concerns, I've got the safety coordinator here, so she can answer.
Yes, could you address safety issues?
Oh, there is. First of all, I'm Rebecca Bagby, and I'm also a coach with the Aransas County Area Master Swimmers. We are, we are all of since May a lot, but US Masters is very concerned with safety on any of their things. And they have, they have a layout which we follow. And yeah, master swimmers only means older, not younger.
It's not a local entity. This is, this is much bigger.
And, and so US Masters is, is very particular about it, and we have guidelines that must be followed. Everybody signs a release before they start swimming, and most of the releases are signed online. Now, if they come and haven't signed up online, then they, then they sign a release on a lot before they, before they're allowed in. To hold harmless everyone, y'all, us, US Masters. They require safety boats in the water. They require lifeguards in the water. They require auxiliary personnel in the water. Now, in the water means in a boat, in a kayak, on a, on a standup, proposed. Just something that eyes on what is.
Why have you chosen to do this in the open bay rather than in Little Bay?
Water quality, cluttered quality.
It just seems like Little Bay would be a safer option.
It certainly does, but I don't want to.
Anyway, as far as the there's gonna be less boat traffic adjacent to the beach park on the beach side, so that's, that's a strong consideration.
What's the minimum age?
Eighteen.
They'll let you in?
I drop every time I get in the.
And also, open water swim is open water swim, and I, I like y'all's design, because the home stretch comes back in a protected, somewhat protected area to get that done, and so that's cool. Did you have any others?
I'll challenge you to swim.
Okay.
Oh, don't hold you to it.
Not floating, but swimming for y'all.
And if you do, I'll charge admission, and we'll all do it. Y'all see me in Speedo.
Oh. Drunk my eyeballs.
I'm good. You get. Fabulous idea, very exciting. Like I said, it's, it's very laid out. This is one of the things that Commissioner Blasick and I have, have discussed over the years with triathlons and so forth, so y'all are breaking the ice, hopefully, where there won't be any ice. The wind is a very interesting consideration. And I will be happy to help with the skimmer. That's an off season for us, so call on me for that.
It's a free.
Say it again?
It's a free charge. Oh, my goodness.
I did want to make sure.
Really?
Hello? Okay, and that's really about it. Well done, and I'm proud of you guys for doing all of that in general.
Detective Jennifer B. Thompson, a coach with US Masters, we're so proud to have their first South Texas Aransas County Area Master Swimmers Club. I have competed myself in open water and triathlons for many years, so this is a dream to have our team put this event together. And I also spoke with Bill Coxwell, which is the Nautical Flea Market. It's gonna be the same weekend, and we're gonna have a great collaboration on that and really, really bring, and you know, a lot of people to this event.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got one more question. So how many do you think?
That's fine.
How many participants do you, do you see?
First year, we're hoping at least fifteen.
Okay.
We're hoping.
And that, that with, in conjunction with the flea market, that's gonna be sure to drive more people onto the beach, so I think that's a good thing.
They've offered to also help, like on, like water, having boats and such. I'll be there for us, so we've really had a lot of support with the community. Even the police department have offered to, brought in any way that they can, so. we've really had a lot of support with the community, even the police department have offered the, any way to make it, so.
Hold on, Mr. Wright?
Well, Chad, you mentioned checking the water for debris and things from the hurricane and other issues. How far out do you estimate you have to be from the beach to have sufficient depth for the swimmers to be able to?
So most of the subsurface is pretty shallow and so we want to be right where it drops off, so if there is any sort of emergency event, shallow water is easy, easy to get to. So right, right where the drop off is, where it's about five feet deep.
So there is a drop, a natural drop off? I've not heard that before, okay.
You been in it before?
When my kids were little, I at the beach. You have to go a real long ways to.
Yep.
Where it drops off.
So, so then Mrs. Russo just mentioned about the activity that they could have built, the aquarium. And then the food truck coming in and all three of y'all coming together doing that construction. And you're looking for the laid out yards, what's gonna affect that? Is that gonna affect the aquariums?
I'll take a stab at answering that. The aquarium in the nautical flea market, which they may end up changing some of their layout because of the construction, but we'll get to that if we get to that. But that's on the other side of the bowl right there, so it's kind of.
So you're not gonna.
Doesn't make it.
They're trying to not gonna.
Just parking.
Contest it maybe.
Not anymore than it is on that weekend. Anyway. I think you had another one?
Uh, yeah, dual question, really it's pointing to Jerry. I, I, I guess my first question is insurance. Do you all even require our units to have insurance and do you see any legal issues for us to be concerned about?
Well, excellent question. Then your association has some sort of standard insurance policy.
And I believe that you perceive a copy of it, our teaching.
Yes, and you also mentioned that as well.
We do have the Aransas County Navigation District as an additional shirt on the policy. And again, we have our own local policy, but it's also sanctioned by US MS, so United States Master Swimmer. And they have that certificate of insurance.
I would suggest that Josh and I get together with you and just like, you know, there's a little cover moment.
Sorry, babe.
Yeah, the other question, what if I do, the board would feel the commission would try to either follow permit. In fact, there's a penalty waiver, which I think would be appropriate for covering things like insurance.
Yep, can y'all handle that in your meeting and bring it back if necessary? Mr. Deleon?
I'm good, moving forward. Go ahead.
I know y'all are experienced with this, so I'm not suggesting something new. One of the concerns I'm sure is other boat traffic coming in. People want personal, you know, water motorcycles, etc. Licking around being curious about what you're doing, but how do you control that?
With, with our, our out of water people. And we just would have to tell.
I believe the police department can help us in intercepting any boats coming in. We're gonna have wave runners and small boats acting as lifeguards. So it's gonna be a fluid situation, but I feel that being so close to the beach, the shallow water will take away some of the risk of that boat traffic.
And the, the area itself is a detriment.
Yeah, we generally, generally try to bend with that, it hasn't, you know.
Open water event has been held here, so we picked this location for safety reasons mainly access and lack of boat traffic. It, it has been discussed to have the event in Little Bay with a ski basin, but the boat traffic is much higher in those areas.
Let me take a stab at this. We have these regattas, these sailing regattas with small boats and this is done all the time. Protecting the sailors and so forth, so that's, that's really not an issue. It's probably in your regulations and operating procedures, I would think.
Safety boats, chase boats or whatever, what term you, you know, you want to use, but there'll also be some stand up public. So it's literally blocking the top of them coming in and no boats really want to get that shallow anyway.
That's true. I would like to suggest, being around here for twenty-two years and going to the nautical flea market every year, which sometimes the weather is absolutely brutal, that maybe you set up an alternate date for the next week or so.
They're swimmers, they can swim in deep, deep water, whatever water the conditions are, right?
It's gonna be exciting. Okay, anybody else?
I'm good.
Anybody here? Anybody not here? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll be happy to make that motion. I, I think this is a grand idea, I really do. Gonna make it, a, a lot of traffic, but that's actually what we're here for, right? Thanks, Chad, thank y'all very much.
Yeah, good job, good luck.
Well, I made the motion, I guess we need to second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Wright made the motion to approve the request from the Aransas County Area Master Swimmers to host the open water swimming competition on May third, third, twenty twenty six. Details be worked out by Mr. Benham and our director, Mr. Wen. And Mr. Deleon made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Two exciting things, there you go.
I expect to see one and Tommy.
Don't they make those little shark skin outfits?
Dive, dive, dive.
Very good, thank y'all and good luck, that's just awesome. Okay, number four, deliberate possible action to approve installation of Christmas lights on Rockport Harbor restroom, Rockport Beach Boost, nine eleven, AC and D office building roof tower. Installation would be completed by November twenty first twenty twenty five with removal by January fifth, twenty twenty six, Christmas lights will be supplied by Rockport. Cold Culture Large District, thank you very much. Mr. Wen?
All right, so the last question about it, I was like, okay, cool, this is gonna be great, it's gonna be something small, we can take care of it, we don't need tickets to vote. It's much larger than that, so it encompasses Rockport Harbor. They're gonna, this, this is going to be a competition on the boats, decorate your boat type of thing. It's gonna be at the memorial, the veterans memorial there, it'll come down, like a kind of building, a corridor down and trying to keep it where there's no dark spots between all the lights. So that encompasses the restrooms there, our booths and the building that's being remodeled. The building is being modeled, they're planning on just putting a light in the inside facing up on a timer. The booths, probably a little bit of lights there on the booths for the entrance to the beach. Big plans about having tree lights, etc. But anyway, it's just much bigger than I thought, I want to make sure everybody knew what was going on.
Cool.
It's gonna be fun. I didn't see any, very few safety risks, the safety risks I could see are extension cords, which we're gonna mitigate by putting some rubber mats on, you know, that kind of thing. But otherwise, the electrical looks like it's adequate, it is adequate to handle the, the minimalist load, really.
And, and they're putting that up themselves or it's a cost to us?
So they're gonna take care of everything all the way up to the booths, I didn't want them messing with our booths because I feel like the easiest way to do it is put a screw and try to stay away from puncturing nice, nicely painted booths to keep the envelope. So the booths, I volunteered our star guys to hang up the lights there at the booths.
Any others while it's your turn?
I'll say it.
Ms. Blasick?
Uh, no, I heard about this plan maybe a couple of months ago and I was excited, I think it's a great plan.
One thing that I noticed was left out was the annex. The, our maintenance building at the beach, which is a big giant pallet, which is cool. I would like to see those permanent lights in the eaves of the annex that all the kids are doing these days, it's so popular and that way we could, they're all LEDs, you can make them a certain color, you could, you know, and it would kind of make that building a little more attractive at night throughout the year. And then we can talk about the budget on that. Great idea, it's gonna be beautiful in conjunction with all of the, the beach displays and pretty exciting. Mr. Wright?
I'm good.
Mr. Wen?
I'm good.
Anybody? Any other comments? All right. Entertain a motion.
I knew that we approved the installation and whatever, come back if you have any cause, I guess. The, all the Christmas lights at Rockport, Rockport Harbor restroom, the booths and the office building. As presented.
Mr. Benham has a comment?
Gosh, I'm, I'm assuming the waiver was lost, you have very minimal material with it, but.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion? I'll second it. Ms. Blasick made the motion, Mr. Wright seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, another exciting change. Okay, center ball and possible action to waiver payments for participants and supporters entering Rockport Beach for the stop, drop and run twenty twenty five event take place on November eighth, twenty twenty five. Mr. Wen?
Yes, sir, uh, see, we've got the stop, drop and run event and it's been approved already. There we, or I say y'all. Y'all have said that y'all, they can host the event and for, for free because it's a fundraiser.
Well, we did, we did say it was gonna be free?
Well, so they can host the event down there, but, but the, the, the charge was gonna be at the booths. So when people came in, they would get the, the charge.
Right.
The setting up the registration and do, acting the events wasn't gonna be a charge. So what they asked and what they requested is that the booth fee be waived for their participants. That would be kind of what I think y'all were assuming was gonna be the fee for it, was the beach access. So some of them might have the annual pass, but they would have to buy the day pass otherwise.
How many participants?
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart, would you like to come forth and explain this change in the game to us?
While she's walking up, may I make a comment? Judy put me on to something when I became elected to this position, is that we don't sell beach access, we sell parking passes.
We sell parking passes.
Correct. And I, I think that's a key to what you decide to do going forward.
They would still be able to walk, even if you wanted to charge for access to the beach or parking to the beach, they could still walk onto the beach for free. That is a.
Viable.
An viable, as long as it's non-motorized. And unactively motorized, so you can go through the gate.
All right, well, good morning, I am Shelley Stewart, I'm with the Rockport Open Theater Commerce. This is the first ever stop, drop and run that we are actually giving started and hosting. Our goal is to host it for two years and then hand it over to the Rockport Volunteer Party Department for their fundraiser for the year. So this kickoff, while we are requesting that we consider now their particip, their participants without purchasing a beach pass at this time. The race though started seven and they should be out of there by ten o'clock in the morning, so that's our class, we're getting ready to put together our did you know for the, the race participants and so we wanted to be able to include the instructions on that and so we were to ask, but we can just tell you to go on in hard, run your race and, and then be gone and then come back when you pay the price.
How many participants do you think?
Right now, we have sixty-one as of this morning and we're looking for probably to end up with about eighty or eighty-five. A lot of them are local, so they probably only layer may not, I'm not sure, but we do have some coming in plenty from the Corpus Christi area.
Anything else, Ms. Blasick? Mr. Deleon?
There's still time to sign up, y'all.
You all right?
So just to clarify, um, it says participants and supporters. So the supporters would be the ones that are actually like managing and running the event for them, the people at the registration booth as an example. Just to clarify that on the.
You'll have, you'll have tags or whatever to clarify as to who's who.
Yes, they'll be issue dibs.
Okay. So in other words, there's a, a, a person that's participating in the event, whether they're supporters or whatever. And they got about five more other people with them. It's that, are they gonna be included in it or what?
No, I think what he's talking about would be like us, the people are gonna be there and the running, the B F A people that are gonna be there registering people as they come. I mean, I don't see, this, it's not really a spectator event, they're running, so I don't see them bringing a large amount of spectators with them. That would be us signing people in and we did hire a company called B F A when they come out and bring the race, their racing stuff. And so that, that would include them and our volunteers that are checking people.
The other question I have, what does it mean by stop, drop and run?
Okay, well, it's for, it's for fire departments, when you try to stop, drop and roll, and so this was this kind of association that works, so stop, drop, run.
Mr. Benham, do you have something? Okay, why are you doing this on the circle?
Gosh, well, we started everywhere on the map, that was the easiest, most convenient and the most beautiful spot to start our journey. It is a five K, ten K and a half marathon, so it's, you have the challenge to find that much space without causing major, you know, running down major highways and things, so.
Is the festival grounds booked for that week? Again?
November eighth, that's the second week, is that what?
This weekend.
It's this weekend, yeah. That have the.
Again, we'll be gathering by ten in the morning.
Okay, well, here's, here's the problem. Our policy has been to not do these things free, certainly in the pavilions and on the beach. The only people that get on the beach free typically is school buses of kids to do activities like that. You also come up with this right before the event, which is kind of a problem. Why can't you do it at the festival grounds, run the beach? You're running off the beach and other events, right, or are you just doing circles?
There, I didn't bring the map with me, but yeah, they're starting down there, it just, the foot rhythm, it had to start there to make it long enough for the races, and we've done several different times, we talked about it earlier too. And starting there, what we talked about was not gonna be long enough. Plus, it was just easier to bring equipment stuff to the circle.
Once again, it's, it's going against precedent and why would it be long enough starting there, because you go out and you come back as opposed to starting at the front and going down and coming back?
Trying to get them out of there quickly, so everything we're doing is at the start and then they come, they finish and they're out. Was another reason too. Plus, I mean, I didn't schedule the route all by myself, it was.
The map shows that the run goes outside.
The second week?
You better check it. Right, and go ahead. Ms. Russo?
And I know just because something was done in the past doesn't mean it's going to be done in the future, but Harper Aim Hospice used to do a remembrance run and I think actually the Looping Crane Strut. But when we, city, excuse me, city did Looping Crane Strut, Aim Hospice did the remembrance run. And we scheduled that the first part of November because we thought there wouldn't be so much activity there. And we used the beach and we were allowed to not charge our participants or the folks who came in, the volunteers, you know, who were the timers and checking people in and giving out prizes afterwards. And that was the last time you had one, maybe.
It was fun, there was a big concert at the time, so.
We didn't have a concert, but not.
Right.
Anyway, I just wanted to mention.
And I'm gonna have to say, are you sure? Okay, Mr. Wright?
I, I think I understand your apprehension because it opens a door. But we are after all a public entity and we're not talking but about sixty to eighty people, if I understood you correctly. And, and some of those, if not most of them, would already have a beach pass. I don't see a big headache for us allowing that, but we do need a little more lead time.
Absolutely, you know, I can explain on that, we don't think of it until they were starting to ask us questions on where they park, how they. Absolutely. You know, I can explain on that. We don't know from Thanksgiving until they were starting to ask us questions on where they park, how they get in, what they do, and then. I do apologize for that.
But I think it, it's a kind of a public duty to allow things like this, uh, for the right reasons.
And just for the record, um, I don't even know what matters, but just for the record, the chamber is not keeping any of this money. This is for the volunteer party department, a hundred percent.
So with all of this. It's too close to time to call in. Can we go to the close before we get out and we let Joshua know after we're closed? I mean, open meeting after the close. Because it's too much, uh, it's not enough information. Everybody skipped talking about thing. Uh, November the second, that'd be November the eighth, that'd be market day, and the second week of the market day. Does anybody know?
I'm gonna.
No, market week, market day is the first.
I mean, you don't wanna pass it, that's fine with me, but I prefer to go to the closed meeting, let's talk about this and then coming out right away.
Could that happen?
I, I don't see. I don't see that that's one of the exceptions that we come and discuss in this particular line.
Okay.
Talking here about it. Here's the facility arrangements. Schedule. Tommy, what, what I perceive of your concern. Is an admirable effort to. Avoid the conflict of the policy. On, sorry, for then, by having the event. In effect be located outside the beach. It's still be located on the district spot. But so you wouldn't, if you put it on the festival ground, then we want earlier. And probably with policy lifted unless you charge your sand and ready. And that's gonna be devastating to, to her fundraising effort.
So, no, we can't talk about it in close?
Yep.
That's good. I, I, I think.
Okay.
Okay, if you can't, if, if you can't do this now, everybody gonna come in the same thing that they're doing right now.
So we, we can solve this.
Okay, that might be a big problem.
Thing we thought on the weekend is the fun run. We have an event down at Saltwater Pavilion. And then we've got, uh, Bird Island being on schedule for, for this weekend. So that's the only events we have for the eighth.
Okay, fine with me. All right, um, I would just like to say this muddy some waters that we've kept very clear for a long time. I will entertain a motion to approve the, um, item.
I'll make the motion, um, begin, Shelley, I, I, it's a great idea. I hope it's not too hastily put together. Speed watch.
We've been working on it for a while. We just been quiet for the season.
And congratulations.
Well, it, it puts us in a bind and I echo Tommy's feelings is. We can't just willy nilly waive the rules, so. That being said, let's. Be careful going forward, please.
And, and please state your motion.
My motion is to approve the Stop, Drop, and Run for the eighth of November. Is that correct, right date?
Correct.
Right, right, okay. I think we need to include in the motion the waiver of the entrance fee. Should make the court. For participants and officials.
Uh. Yes, I amend my motion to include those participants and officials with Shelley coming up with an idea as to how we keep, how we know who those people are. And not just waving people into the beach park.
Well, probably most of them, since I'm gonna be. I'm native, my, my, they'll come in one car. Yeah, you don't, you don't know who they are anymore.
I don't, I don't wanna make it too strenuous. We'll do our best to make the best of a.
We have.
Fluffy situation.
Place on that, which.
Yeah, okay.
You have to be direct to solve that problem.
There you go. By the, by the way, I love your godlike reverb on there. Excellent job, y'all. At, at this point, I would like to say it's not really that big a deal. It's just muddy waters that I'm worried about. I'll entertain a second.
Awesome.
Okay. I've got a motion for Mr. Wright to approve and the, uh. Stop, drop, and run and for participants and, um, officials to be able to access the beach free. Yep, Ms. Blasick is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good work, good luck. Nah, you'll be good. Okay, um, number six, we're gonna move this behind the, um, closed meeting. Um, I've already consulted with Mr. Bennett on it and we'll take it up afterwards. Um, number seven, consider impossible action to approve implementation of a dedicated payroll software system. With proposed implementation timeline twentieth and twenty twenty six, Mr. Wynn?
Yes, sir, we've got, uh, two slides on that packet we've got. We've got QuickBooks, uh, online and Delete Payroll. And then we've got QuickBooks Online versus Desktop. So.
Thank y'all. Yeah, good work. Thank y'all. Yeah, you don't have to stick around. Are, are you the, uh, Grandma Bee's guy?
No.
Grandma Bee's here?
The owner? Pizza Pizza Man.
You're the pizza man?
No, sir, I, I've got bubble weeps.
Bubble.
Oh, I had heard that you own Grandma Bee. Yeah, yeah, I forgot. Yeah, I bought a dead weed.
You know how that I heard over here, Rockport. I like your bookends there.
The Jacks, are you?
The Jacks, okay.
Let's get back to it. All right, QuickBooks and, uh, online and desktop, basically both sides, just give you all some information as to what QuickBooks Online and Elite. Which are two different softwares. Uh, they, they work, they work in tandem. So right now we've got a QuickBooks Desktop version and, uh. It's antiquated and going to be less and less supported through, uh, QuickBooks. They're giving us, uh, estimated time of twenty twenty seven to stop supporting that software. The issue with them stopping supporting the software, uh, is that we still have a majority or all of our past on there. I would like to act, get QuickBooks Online going so that we can migrate QuickBooks Desktop into QuickBooks Online. And get the kinks worked out before discontinuation of the support. So what's it gonna, essentially it's here because, uh, it costs more. It seemingly costs more. The ticket price for the whole thing was, uh, eight thousand, seven hundred thirty seven dollars and twenty cents. Uh, but what it doesn't count is the amount of hours that we're putting into doing payroll on the long hand currently. And doing, uh, the, the actual QuickBooks itself. Desktop, which doesn't integrate with right now anything. Like, it's all one person typing information in, hitting enter, going to the next line and punching it in. So. On the QuickBooks Online versus Desktop, we've got, uh, they have some estimates here. As far as. How much like time we're spending on it, if that makes any sense. Ultimately, it's gonna save us time, it's gonna save us man hours. And, uh, it'll streamline the office significantly. Janine, if you have any, you wanna say anything about it?
Um, basically, we've got a very manual and faded, uh, system currently. It takes a lot of time to input, to verify. We still very much on a, on a paper-based system to, to be honest. Uh, by bringing in, uh, the payroll system for QuickBooks, it will move us into a more digital and app-based, um. Software and base, so our, our, um, employees can. Sign in without having to physically come to the office or to, to actually physically sign papers. It gives us the management a, a chance to verify quickly and easily, almost entertaining to see what's going on within. Within our HR, the going time, time, time.
Additionally, with the QuickBooks Elite software, uh, accountability is a big part of what I'm focusing on when I look at problems. This software is gonna be, when, when you clock in with their work phone, uh, I'll be able to, it'll send me notifications as far as safety goes. If someone gets themselves hurt or whatever and it, they haven't moved in a while, it'll buzz and it'll say, hey, so and so hasn't moved in a while. Some, please someone check on them. Uh. It, it seems, it seems to be, uh. These guys working sometimes pairs of two and it bothers me. And they're all over Rockport, Copano, uh, all the way up to Lemoore. So if, if, if someone does get hurt in the bush or gets bit by a snake, their response time for them getting ahold of somebody. Uh, I want another, I want another avenue of communication.
And this is the payroll system that y'all talk about that is gonna help track all this, right?
Payroll is actually, it's a G O, a G O F N?
G O Benson.
Uh, G O Benson, so they, it actually tracks because everybody has a cell phone. It actually tracks them wherever they may be. So if we, we do hear them. After that, we can find them. Um, there's also, it tracks times, uh, that they actually are working, so it's.
It'll track PTO, it'll track the hours, it'll track their clock in and clock out for final, and then it, we can edit it as well. So if they keep clocking in at eight oh one. Uh, the department head can say, okay, we can fix that. We know that. Uh, it's PTO, they can access their PTO. They'll be able, instead of coming to us individually, as it is right now, if someone wants to know how much time they have. They would come to the office, ask about it, get someone to look it up for them, print out, and then give it to them. This will keep it on their phone. They can log into the secure system and find out how many hours they have available as well as apply for their PTO in the future. None of the department heads, uh, have, I've talked to all the department heads and they all, uh, like these changes, if that helps, if that helps decision.
Um, these dollar amounts are annual?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, anything else from y'all?
Uh, we, uh, just to let you know, we have tried other systems, uh, and unfortunately, um. At, with, where our, some of our, um, locations are based, it's very difficult to get those systems to work and stay working. So by having it on, moving it to a mobile device or cell phone, it alleviates the, the constant repair and. Being, being told by employees, this doesn't work, this never works or works intermittently. So that, that's will help on that front as well.
She's talking about hardware, just wouldn't have any additional hardware. We have existing, we can use existing.
Okay, Ms. Blasick?
No. You're in agreement with this? Okay, so that's staff are the people who will be having to implement it?
We have a good plan, uh, the department heads and I, we've gotten together and that's a concern. We have an audit going on, we've got moto, BOLO going on, now we're gonna have QuickBooks, uh, going on.
Yeah.
Thankfully there, we, we, we structured our office and we're our own little bubbles and each bubble is going to be implementing something, but they won't be. Crossing, if that makes sense, there. Everybody sees the benefit for these softwares and the time of invested upfront to implement them is, is far outweighed by the advantages to having this system.
Right. Uh, when do you, when do you plan on trying to implement these? I mean, you and I have discussed this and I mentioned one concern is loss of data.
Correct.
And that will be that transition.
That'll be mitigated by, and we've talked about, uh, anything I say, I've talked about it with multiple department heads as opposed to just me. Uh, but we've talked about it and the loss of that is going to be curbed or by having the system we have currently. As a sort of time capsule that we can draw from at any time. So if QuickBooks Online has a glitch or something that's not in the system or something we can't find, we'll have to go into QuickBooks Desktop. Which will cost us less because we only need one user instead of five. Um, and pull that information manually and then have to manually import it into online or just use it for audit purposes. Either way, it's. It won't, won't be lost because it still exists in tandem.
Okay. You agree with that, Janine?
We're gonna run for the, the first, uh, while we, we through our audit cycles, we're gonna run in par, basically parallel, so we can, we can work with both. Um, and then there's still a few things, still questions that we, that we need to ask, just details that we need to work through in the next couple of weeks, but it's, I think we've got to move.
Okay.
Timeframe wise, uh, was your question, and I apologize, I didn't answer it. It's, we're looking at January.
To start?
Yes, just because it's the, you're being in a fiscal year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm, I'm, QuickBooks Online. We're still talking about it. I like the idea of starting fresh with QuickBooks Online and moving forward. Uh, the other option is to. Migrate QuickBooks Desktop to QuickBooks Online. It comes with its own problems. I like the idea of keeping QuickBooks Desktop as a time capsule. In itself and we can pull information as we have been and then move forward with the new system.
So you're not gonna do the migration?
Well, it's on the table, that's what I'm saying. I haven't made a decision because I haven't had enough information. Uh, for example, I wanna get with Ann and her team. And dive deep more, deeper with QuickBooks representation. Once we get the software, say, hey, what's the pros and cons?
Have you talked to Jess about this?
Uh, I've been trying to get ahold of them, uh, negative.
Okay.
He's in an, he's in, uh, school audits right now.
I'm sorry.
He's, he's deep in school audits right now.
No, that's true, he is. Is there enough, would you like to talk to another expert on this?
Yes, but, uh, basically if y'all didn't like this and they voted down, I didn't wanna spend a man hours in it. If it gets approved, then I'll spend more man hours and make, we have another month that I have ish to make a decision. My only concern.
Oh, sorry, order please. Are you finished?
I'm done.
Mr. DeLeon?
I think it's good, uh, management style that you have, including the, the people that are actually gonna do the work. Without their input, it's not gonna work.
Correct.
Okay, so that's one part. The other part is it's, it's time for us to get the antiquated stuff that we got. Move on forward and you foresee, uh. A major change coming up, so we might as well get it done now than wait until the time comes on it. I, I say I'll, I'm all for it, uh, for the change. Uh, anything for, to provide the employees in the office a little bit faster and quicker operation and save man hours too, so.
Good?
Good.
Let's get me and go to you.
Although I.
Wow, sir.
My concern you heard throughout the year, and that is that we still don't have the twenty twenty three audit completed. See, I wanna ask this. Do we have, have we given the auditing team one hundred percent of the things that they've asked for?
I am literally this close.
Give them.
So the answer is no?
Say that, give them the percentage.
We're at ninety, I think we're ninety one percent now.
We were at ninety four percent the last time I heard a number, so have we backed up?
And unfortunately I had the order to actually add some more items on there.
If we do anything that forestalls that audit beyond this year, we have a problem.
I understand that, and I was actually with, um, and to give that information.
Jack?
Sir? We got an item that we're talking about. That's something else.
I don't think so.
We're talking about QuickBooks. We're not talking about.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. I, I did say, this reason I think it ties in, Martin, is I said, if we do anything before that audit is complete, we're making a big mistake.
I see, not.
Okay. Well, and it's, it's, go ahead.
The audit will be done before we move on to it, I can guarantee that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that was an excellent. Point you made, by the way. Mr. Wynn?
I'm good.
Ask for it, whatever, Josh, represent. Oh, we knew that was gonna happen.
Oh, yeah. We talk a lot, come on, man.
And I don't blame you. So, um, all right. My turn. Um.
Short, quick.
Thank you, simple.
Please.
Great idea, um, for all the reasons. Um, I have done this, by the way, they did this without any input from me, so don't be thinking I'm guiding things like y'all tend to do. Um, but I have been through this. We use QuickBooks Payroll, all of those things that they're gonna get, I, um, am wholehearted in. Um, as far as audits, including the twenty twenty four, you are not gonna lose a thing that we have already in the desktop version. Okay? That accounting has been done in the desktop version, um, so. Um, so you're not gonna lose anything there. One thing I caution is. Going in with integration with Molo or any other software that we're gonna use. Before you get finished across the board. It, I've done it three times and it never works. We go back to installing with typical reports, but I just, I just caution that. Um, the other thing, obviously, we've got, uh, good payroll system. Doing a migration is not a good idea, especially in our case where we have so much going on. The problems that we have with policies and procedures today are not the fault of the software, because I've used them both. And this other software is not gonna solve those. The good news is, we have an operational audit coming up. And I assume you're waiting before you establish your accounts and start all over. That you're gonna get finished with that project as well.
Yeah, we need to type any of those things that we may have currently and we need to fix policy before we get into the new.
Yeah, when you go start into something new. So you're losing nothing. Um, the, the conversion is, is real good, your payroll system is gonna help you a lot. And, uh, so that's where I, anybody else have any questions or comments? Please, not.
No, other than I do agree with Jack completely. Get this twenty-three off, finish and get a good start on twenty-four.
I got up to ninety, we got up to ninety, just, just some comments. We got to ninety-eight percent on that thing thing and then they added. I didn't know, they, they just added more stuff to us, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I didn't know that.
That's a good sign.
That happens.
Okay, all right. Everybody good? Good. All right, uh, so. The item, implementation of a dedicated payroll soft, software within implementation timeline. Uh, we've got this in two. So the payroll system is the item right now that we're talking about. So if somebody will make a motion. Number seven is to get the payroll system. And then number eight is to go to QuickBooks Online. So we've covered them both.
Yeah.
Uh, anybody wanna make a motion on number seven?
I make a motion to approve the implementation of the dedicated payroll software system. With proposal to implicate. Implementation of the timeline within twenty twenty-six is presented to us by. Our executive director of the navigation district, which we hired to improve the navigation districts. Operations.
Okay, got a motion. Second?
He even puts a lot of that stuff, so I'm gonna go ahead and put in, put the. He care, gets carried on, so I get carried on too, so. We good?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
About the extraneous stuff.
Let me make a stab and if everybody's in, we'll, we'll go from there. Um, uh, Mr. Deleon made a motion to, um, approve the, uh, implementation of a dedicated payroll software system. With proposed implementation timeline within twenty twenty-six. Uh, and I'm gonna throw in as presented, which brings in the, the, uh, QuickBooks part. Um, and Ms. Blasick seconded that.
Thank you.
Y'all good with that motion? Okay, all in favor?
He's not reading what it says on there.
Well, I've read exactly what it says in there and I added something on the software, as presented. Yeah, as presented, which I mentioned was the QuickBooks payroll system. And then I said, is everybody good with that motion as stated? Any amendments? Everybody good? Anybody got a problem? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and then number eight, deliberate possible action to approve implementation of QuickBooks Online with. Proposed implementation of twenty twenty-six. The approval will include running the current desktop version currently until audit requirements have been met. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. The implementation of the QuickBooks Online with proposed implementation of the timeline of twenty twenty-six. This approval will include running the current desktop version concurrently until the audit requirements have been met as presented.
I'll second that. Mr. Wright's second. Mr. Deleon made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good work, y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, deliberate possible action to approval to make repairs to Little Bay Education Center Electrical Panel. Which is an A C and D lease held property located one twenty-one Seabreeze Drive, just where we're sitting. Good luck, man. Mr. Win?
Yes, sir. The, uh, this building here is electrical system. Uh, they were having issues with their air conditioner. They investigated, we also looked into it, uh, superintendent and I. It turned out to be the electrical box back here, the main panel. We couldn't get into it because it was proven shut. We opened it up, it's the electric company, so we didn't wanna, they didn't wanna mess with it. But they were, they were willing to give us a quote without being able to see what was inside. So I said, no, that's not acceptable. So we looked inside, uh. And it was, it was worse. You can't touch or move anything inside because the corrosion is pretty bad. Really bad. So now we've got something to look at, we've got a big quote here. Uh, we've got now, this is sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, eighty-six cents. To basically overhaul that box on the outside, replace.
Oh, that's it.
Replace the panel, replace the stainless steel disconnect. Uh, they're not using the six hundred amps, so we went, we're able to go down to a smaller amperage. Ultimately, without that. Without that, we can't get further repairs electrically inside the building without knowing that our. Input is clean, if that makes sense. That's pretty much it.
Ms. Blasick?
Why are they, why did they install six hundred amps if they're not using?
It sounded like the, the expectation of the building was higher when I built it than, uh. Than, than, than the outcome. For example, I think the contractor probably saw this huge experimental. Uh, device in here that all he saw was electricity use.
Okay.
Uh, there's, it's four projectors, turns out. It's not anything, uh, you know.
Right.
Kind of reactive.
This building is, was way, way overbuilt, which was one of the reasons when they, the city wanted to tear it down, we went, no way! That's.
Yes, I, I live in those days.
Yeah, exactly. Any others?
Y'all the ones making the decision?
No, the city don't this.
So what's, what's the comparison in, in both of, and this, and this the only bid that you got? From electricals? The only one?
Sure, you want. Yes, sir, the, there was, we've got two bids, uh, that were out. This was. Uh, this company we've used before and they were cheaper.
This one is for the food truck. Correct, the nine thousand?
Nine thousand's for the food truck, yes.
Yeah, and the sixteen.
So every time I present a video, unless there's two that are similar, I'm only gonna present the one that I think is right. Unless you're gonna say otherwise, obviously.
That it? Mr. D?
It needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed, correct?
I don't think we have any choice.
Are you going back with something that's not gonna rot so quick?
Unfortunately, everything that's there is right. It's, it's, it's everything I wouldn't build if I was building it myself. Stainless steel, aluminum, plastic. Uh, the particles, saltwater particles and humidity get embedded. And then they build on itself and those do become corrosive. And, or they, they, those particles corrode, the mineral buildup corrodes and then creates, uh, conductive paths.
You, was that, is that the system that was installed originally on the building?
I don't know that.
Yes.
It is, you think it is. And I mean, what, how old is this building? It was before Harvey, you know?
Yeah, twelve, fifteen years, something like that.
We did say, the contractor did say they was gonna, uh, put in some other devices in there such as putty and try to seal the box up better.
Okay.
Play that existing putty was just non-existent. It maybe it was there at one point and it's all.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Rose is a fact of life down here.
Um, okay, where is this located?
Yeah, questions?
Right out here to the right.
Southeast. Oh, why didn't they do that? I guess the air conditioners are out there too.
Uh, the, the air conditioners, yeah, I think they're out here.
Do you think it, two things, do you think it's worth possibly moving that panel? So that it's not in the elements as much with the wind blowing on it, which is the big problem? Or, um, is it worth building something around it that will reduce that?
So I looked into a fiberglass shell that would go around that whole thing. Um. It drove the price up dramatically. Man, imagine that.
A fiberglass shell?
Right, uh, but there's a wall, that wall there can, goes all the way around, that protects it from the wind.
Um, so it's inside.
That's correct.
That wall, so somewhere protect. That's.
The mess.
Big deal. Well, it's kinda been another fifteen years before we change again, keep looking there.
I was gonna say, if it, if it's lasted that long.
We're going back with stainless and aluminum and plastic. Uh, fifteen years, if you, if that's what the number is, then if it's original, it's lasted.
Thousand bucks a year, huh? What do you, what do you do? Okay, thanks, Mr. Wright?
Would normal maintenance forestall such a thing happening again?
I think it, I talked about, I talked to the superintendent about this. I think it would slow it down if we had regular checks and that's where. I have a maintenance system going into place. It's not completed yet, as many other irons I have in the fire.
Okay.
It is a priority, but that'll keep us, I think it's gonna pull, uh, increase the longevity of these significantly.
That's what I meant. Okay. Mr. Win?
I'm good.
Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I feel comfortable making this. Okay, no, uh, I move that we approve repairs to the Bay Education Center's electrical panel. Which is on all these held property at one twenty-one Seabreeze Drive as presented and accepting the bid from electrics.
I'll second that motion. Okay, Ms. Blasick made the motion to make repairs to the Bay Education's electrical panel as presented. At the Bay Education Center, um. All in favor? Oh, and Mr. Wright, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, deliberate possible action and approving a request from C C A Babes on the Bay to utilize A C and D leased roads. Located Fulton Park Festival Ground for twenty-seventh Annual Babes on the Bay Fishing Tournament. Commencing May eleventh to May seventeenth. This approval includes selling and consumption of alcohol. Mr. Win?
Uh, as presented, it's something that we've done every year. I didn't see any negatives or any changes, they haven't brought me any changes that would notify any difference, so it's gonna look the same, it's gonna be the same.
And once again, this is just for the roads. The festival grounds are under the purview of the city of Fulton. Um, in the past, um, Josh, we have, uh, worked with them to make sure traffic control was implemented. I wanna get that, I can help, um, which I have done over the years, so. Anybody got any question?
My goodness, I don't, it says twenty-seventh annual. I don't remember being here that long, do you?
Wasn't here, but they, they were doing it. I was at the.
Subway South.
Rocky Hill, which was before that, they've done it a lot of places.
Move around.
Just blew up. In fact, they were doing it on the festival grounds here and then moved to Fulton.
I, I remember the first one was here.
Barry's got a question. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, recommend that if a motion is made, United States A C and D leased roads.
True.
Those are not leased.
True. Okay?
This one made lease.
And the other thing, the approval includes selling and consumption of alcohol is not an issue because that's on the festival grounds per se. Anybody, questions, comments? One more, Mr. Bennett?
But I, I, I think, you know, the reason they want that specifically mentioned. Is. I'm, well, I mean, I'm assuming that they, they want them right to be able to enter and. Or have some of their goods, where they're just on, on enclosed road.
I think, and you can comment on this, we do these on these events because it's a T A B C requirement for their permit.
As regards to an area where they're going to be vending.
It won't be on our roads, but we can approve it.
But, but that's, it's good to include it in their, their permit, that's.
Sounds good.
So we're striking the word leased, is that correct here?
Yep, yeah, strike their word leased.
It's, it's, that's, the letter they requested, it has alcohol, selling alcohol. If, if it doesn't, if it's not, if it's not us to approve it, then why put it in?
Well, we can approve it and they can do it, we don't care.
As a, a landowner.
Hello.
No, you don't hear me.
Godlike reverb.
Put it on the other side next to that chair, like easier for him, so he won't reach forward. And you go, now you're talking.
She don't hear me.
Yeah, now we can.
C V C, permitting requires approval from the landowner. For the sales and something else called, that's a reason we always. Not approval for the district to sell it, if we had to approve the match, if they will be.
Right, the nonprofit. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? Entertained a motion? My motion goggles?
I'll do it. Deliberate, um, I move that we approve the C C A Babes on the Bay request. To use the A C and D roads located Fulton Park Festival Grounds for the twenty-seventh annual Babes on the Bay Fishing Tournament. Which starts May eleven to May seventeen and this includes the selling and consumption of alcohol.
I second that. Um, Ms. Blasick made the motion. Mr. Win seconded the motion as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Consider impossible action, a request made by the Rockport Songwriter Association. Excuse me, to extend previously approved road closures of Castor Line Drive and Harbor Acc. Access Road. Of Fulton Beach Road that lies between two oh two North Fulton Beach Road. And the A C and D property at three three five to Forest Loop commencement of the road closure. Uh, due to begin Wednesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-five through Sunday, November ninth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Win?
Uh, so they, yeah, I brought it up last meeting, uh, that it was gonna come up again for this meeting. Last meeting, it was. Uh, it got to me before two, it was after we submitted the approval of the agenda already. Now, that's why it's on here again. Uh, see, I think Tommy had, uh, did you wanna talk about this one?
Um, if anybody's got any questions, I'll entertain, Ms. Blasick. Mr. Deleon?
Mm-mm.
Mr. Wright?
No, we've been doing before, so.
Entertain a motion? So moved as presented? Second. That was Mr. Wright.
Second.
Did you do it first, Ms. Blasick?
No.
No, okay, Zach, Win's got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Delivering possible action to approve plan of reorganization of ownership of the lease. E J two Rockport, including approval of subleases to subsidiary companies with regard to property at one forty Cove Harbor North. Mr. Win, but I think I'm going to Mr. Bennett first.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's a thing we'll question tonight, that's all.
Oh, good to meet you.
So you, you have information that will give us information to make a decision, is that?
Informational information.
What I'm hearing? In regard to, um, negotiation of real estate? So that'll go, number twelve will go with number seven down to the continuation of the meeting. Uh, deliberate and possible action of activities and give update related A C and D one hundredth anniversary celebration, Ms. Blasick.
Oh, I didn't know that was gonna be on there. Uh, basically, we are going to try to finalize our photos. For all of the displays that we plan to have the, the, uh, celebration on the fourteenth, December fourteenth. And, um, we're still gathering a few, but I think we have the majority of them, so. And I think that the, uh, C D and P will also be sending out an E V I D, I don't know if I told you guys that. We're gonna use the electronic indications, those will be going out fairly soon. Um, things are moving along and then get through this and then we'll move to the next items.
Mr. Deleon? Perfect. Um, you talked about your invitation and we're having a four, uh, December fourteenth party? Um, you talked about your invitation and we're having a fort uh December fourteenth party?
Correct.
Event, hundred year, what is the plan on that? And by the way, excellent job digging up all those invitees that should be invited and we'll have some more, but that's, that was very well done.
Anyone who thinks it, it's mainly, the bulk of the people will be people who are our consultants. Our major tenants, which I defined as they pay us more than fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, we we had to choose a cutoff. And then it will be all of the elected officials in the county will also receive it. The Maritime Museum has asked us to include their current chairman, past chairman and the board secretary, which is fine. Um, if you can think of anyone else in any of these organizations who should be invited, let me know.
And y'all, keep all that in mind. My question was the party itself.
The party.
Where, what?
It's gonna be Saltwater Pavilion. It will be, it's the same date as the um, Tis the Season Concert, so we start at five. Concerts over at four that will give people time to wrap up with concert, whatever they need to do to get home. Take kids home and get back to the, and ours will be at five. Um, I still believe that uh Todd Hunter will be there. And he, he will be in town for that concert and he will then come on over there. Uh, we're gonna save him at seven, but if anybody wants to stay later, I don't think there's objection. And um, we still have to arrange, I have already arranged the catering. We need to arrange the alcohol. Use, and who's gonna provide that? And then we'll have, we will have um different displays set up of photos. And historic photos and other photos of of all of our properties, or many of our properties, you should say, as many as we can find. If you put it that way. And then we'll have, um, I've asked Keith Barrett to, and you've heard him give his, he's the one who has the most. Direct knowledge of the development of the district over time and he will give a very short speech. And we will have, um, just kind of going over a rough outline. And I've asked Todd Hunter to speak and if Don Buckingham comes, we'll allow her a few minutes to speak. And it will be, it'll be, it'll be catered. Uh, it won't be a meal, it'll be appetizers kind of thing. Probably have a champagne toast.
Mr. Daily, huh? We talked about the photos and I've heard the term storyboard, uh, e.
Right, lot, well, basically large.
I have talked to C D and P who is coordinating all this for us and talked about, and I just would like y'all's input. Talked about having something that's very durable, that we can pop up, pop down, we could use throughout.
Yes.
The future history, wherever it happens, maybe Seafair, just to present those things, so. Um, if we can, if y'all are good, keep up.
Well, and I've also talked to them about, we may eventually produce something like the, I think that the. Chamber would be interested and and we also talked about doing tri- a tri-fold holder. We don't have a handout about our properties. And that would be something I heard the Chamber would include in it. So, yeah, we're thinking in terms of everything we're doing. It will be as evergreen as possible, which means it'll be available for use later on.
Endure, yeah, kind of what I was thinking.
So, yeah, that's.
Great job.
Oh, I don't say, I don't say great.
Great job. You're doing good. I'm counting on you.
We still have a lot of things, a lot of water to go under that bridge.
Doing good. Okay, do you have any constructive?
Yeah, she's doing real good.
Okay, Mr. Wright? Mr. Win?
I'm good.
Okay, I don't think we have an action on this.
No, no.
Okay, good job. Thank you very much. Okay, executive directors report updates on projects and happenings on AC and D properties, which may include, but not limited to. Construction improvements, condition, Rockport Harbor, Cove Harbor, Fulton Harbor, the festival grounds, Rockport Beach, Little Bay. Public restrooms and other AC and D product, properties and projects. Status of grants and issues with existing leases. Mr. Win? Jerry, did you write that?
All right, so I sent you the two week uh executive report. And I've got a lot of stuff in there. I've noticed those are starting to grow. It was one page, then it was page and a half, now it's three. Uh, I'm gonna try to keep it more concise next time. But ultimately, um, some of the big happenings. Got a, the new concrete shot at Copeland for the red base stand down there.
Oh, good. That's it.
Sorry?
That is it on that base stand, right?
Yes, ma'am, that one's complete.
Taking the mud.
We, I I talked to him maybe about trying to get some grass going there, once the, you know, maybe maybe one of the drafts.
Yeah.
Got, personnel wise, we've got a replacement for Crystal. Uh, we've got Adam for maintenance coming in. We've got, um, on Fulton Harbor, we had a vessel that tried to sink on us, we saved that. Uh, I got to talk to Tex dot to good effect. Uh, they were on their radar for Cove Harbor and Rockport Harbor. Anything I say, if you wanna ask questions, please do. Beach operations, I don't know if y'all saw some Facebook posts about us. I was able to, I feel like I was able to answer everything properly and. From that, uh, I moved up in my priorities, some feedback and reporting systems that I have, things that are trying to make in place. So I booked that up so we can get feedback from the community quicker, as well as direction as far as what's broken quicker. No one will complain faster than I've done. We've got some environmental monitoring, uh, some things that y'all saw. I think I sent out the picture of the boom uh to the commissioners. That Ryan had mentioned that he was gonna put out. This was a bit ago when the Rockport Pilot. Was out there showing off the the scum on the top of the toolie, y'all never seen that?
Yeah, I saw that.
The uh, the solution was, or that that sparked uh Ryan to contact Parks and Wildlife and G L O and myself. Uh, as now, and to let him know what the next steps were moving forward. I think Mr. Ballos, I think he contacted you as well. Uh, let's see. Facilities wise, electrical at the Fulton Harbor Pier is out on one half of one pier. Everything got shifted over to the other pier, and so they're not, the vessels themselves aren't without power. But that's, it works, Caldwell Building need repair. Yeah, I don't know how much I can do. Uh, the building was fun, it got started, uh, November thirty first.
They did.
Yes, ma'am, uh, well, I say it got started, the road, not road. Their engagement team is in there. It's not really.
Okay, you're talking about a company name, that's.
Oh, Serprow.
Molo seventy-five percent complete. Uh, the audit went down the percentage because they added more stuff to us, even though we submitted a hundred and. Something, I don't.
Saying four forty-six documents this weekend and then uh, a further document. So I am looking to start.
And the, the complaints feature, I sent y'all a, a link. Y'all click on that, you'll see what that looks like, what it will look like. It's a draft right now, it's a month finished with it. But that'll mean that everybody that's on the beach is able to click on that, submit a problem or complaint or whatever. That way in the future, if someone does have a problem on Facebook, I can point them that way as a, hey, we're, you're gonna have a chance to fill this out.
Can we call that a comments instead of complaints?
Comments, complaints, feedback, uh, concerns, it's, it's.
Concerns.
It's uh, yeah, well, I'll look at the wording, but it's all draft right now.
Cool.
Anyway, questions?
For some reason, it didn't come through all my.
Understood, I'll resend it.
Mr. Daily, huh?
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Good, thank you, I'm good.
Good. Good job. Chairman and Commissioners reports update on AC and D environmental and safety issues relating to Little Bay and other district properties. Um, we've got some great movement um in the direction of drainage and um mitigation and projects. I wanna commend our entire team, including Mr. Picarazzi. The system is working, the stormwater technical committee is working. There was a, I know, I know. The uh, they were getting ready to make a major discharge and Mr. Picarazzi, as mentioned. Contact Parks and Wildlife, T C E Q, Mr. Ballos and Mr. Win. And everything went smoothly as far as I know. The other time they did it, my phone blew up, everything was cool this time. And uh, very well done by all. Um, and we're gonna hit those other two um. In the uh, number one item of continuation of meeting and I had. One thing, um, we had our um monitoring team that was monitoring places around Little Bay and others. And singing them to um, the Meadows Institute, which is the uh, one of the arms. University arms, they're at Southwest Texas State. And they, or I guess it's not Texas State University. Anyway, not much back and forth. Um, I am looking to get the folks at um G L O. To see if we could move all of that information over to Hart, which tends to understand our coastal problems. And they, I think they'll agree because they moved our coastal problems over to Hart. Um, Fulton Oyster Fleet's moving in, Mr. Win? Please stay on top of that with your staff.
They're moving in already.
It's an interesting program and uh, we just need to stay on top of that. Um, and that's really about it. Anybody else?
Good.
Okay, at uh, press questions? Any other questions?
You press back there? Sunglasses?
All right, we are going to go into a closed session. The commission will recess this open meeting and conduct a closed session meeting. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct a private consultation with its attorney under five five one oh seven, one of the act. Uh, deliberate real property, five five one oh seven two, and deliberate regarding personnel matters under five five one oh seven four, the act specific. Subjects among others include drainage related matters, contracts for legal and related support services, leases of real property. Uh, following the closed meeting, the commission will reconvene into the open meeting. If you wanna be notified and not gonna hang around, um, please get your information to Ms. Looney. And she will notify you as soon as we can, and other than that. Okay, we closed the closed meeting and we are now going back into open meeting. And we've uh, got a few items to discuss. We went back and revisited number six. Um, and I would entertain a motion to table that item.
I'm gonna re-table item six.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Second, all in favor? Very good. I, I should have done it without, without objection. And without objection.
I've got two, two seconds, can one, what somebody?
Oh, I didn't realize that. I seconded Judy, I thought, who was the other second?
I made the motion.
And Jack seconded.
And Jack is second.
And then without objection, we will table number twelve, which is the ownership of the, let's see. Okay. And we move on to our continuation of open meeting. Item number one, deliberate possible action. Related to an amendment to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Ranses County. For stormwater management, drainage in solution around Rockport Harbor area, mainly the Concho Street. Authorizing the AC and D chairman to execute the proposed revised amendment. And what this is, is the interlocal agreement um to continue the Concho Street. Development that we all discussed, which is putting in um best management practices, the city upon our approval. And the city's approval, and I think the county already approved. Um, the county will initiate their engineering on this very important project, so. I will entertain a motion to approve the I L A as presented.
I've moved that we approve the I L A as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor? Commissioner Blasick made the motion, Commissioner Wright made the second. Okay, and then the next is our memoranding of understanding. Between the city of Rockport, Ranses County, town of Fulton and Ranses County Navigation District. And uh, the purpose of this memorandum of understanding states agreement principle, mutual intentions with respect to cooperation, joint supportive. Pursuing various strategies of funding, intending to enhance Little Bay water quality. Um, this was originally put forth by the Restore Little Bay um bunch. And their main goal is to get our tier one um Little Bay Restoration Project, which is under consideration. For funding by the G L O um to get that done and they are doing some great things to uh move that along and I suggest we support them. So, uh, this has also been approved by all of the entities and the Stormwater Management Committee.
You would like a motion?
Yes, sir.
I uh, mo- move that we approve the interlocal agreement as it's drafted and will be the last signers, I understand it?
It's, no, it's a memorandum of understanding.
I've mislabeled it, memorandum of understanding. And I think the city still needs to sign it, but all indications are everything's going to.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Wright, second by Ms. Blasick. All in favor? Aye. You wanna do it?
No.
I'm moving adjourned to me. I'll second.